Good evening, I'd like to call this Thursday, February 22nd, meeting of Tacoma School District Board of Directors to Order. Please rise and join me for a flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the General Counsel please call the roll?
President Cobb?
Here.
Vice President Viall?
Here.
Director Wenskill?
Here.
And are we expecting Director Hines?
Yes, he's in traffic, I believe, on his way.
Alright, well, we have a quorum.
So, we'll move on to item four, adoption of the agenda.
I move adoption.
Second?
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion is adopted. So, item five, recognition of staff, students, and community. Five point one, recognition of Gold Star Community Partner Award to the Center for Intercultural and Civic Engagement Youth Programs Team, University of Puget Sound.
Ms. Tambarra, are you joining us for that one?
Do I get to say "Go Loggers"?
Very focused here, okay. Good evening, everyone. Tacoma Public Schools defines partnership as a cooperative relationship between students, families, schools, school districts, and the greater Tacoma community. Partners have committed to supporting student academic success and the whole child. When it comes to student success, TPS recognizes that schools cannot do it alone. The Gold Star Community Partner Award signifies honor and thanks to a community partner who has made a difference by doing what is best for kids. The Office of Spiritual Life and Civic Engagement, as part of the Center for Intercultural and Civic Engagement, CICE, at the University of Puget Sound, has provided tutoring to TPS students for approximately four years preceded by an additional 25 years of campus-based free tutoring and mentoring programs. In 2013, the Partnership Office met with UPS to ask if they could make arrangements for their students to leave the UPS campus and instead provide tutoring onsite at TPS schools. This was because we discovered that the students who need tutoring the most could not travel to the UPS campus. And we were so happy, and they agreed to change their model. So, under the leadership of Skylar Beal, they have gone above and beyond serving TPS students. Here are some examples. In 2014-15, they started with 12 tutors at four schools and ended with that year with 29 tutors. Skylar created partnerships with Peace Community Center, Hilltop Scholars, Trinity Presbyterian After School Reading Program, and served McCarver, Bryant, and Jason Lee students. They had a fundraiser and raised nearly $2,000 to compensate UPS students who were using their own money to travel to our schools. In 2015-16, in the fall, Skylar re-tutored 26 tutors and organized a Schools Out Washington Training for them. Due to the increase in tutors and mentors, they had another fundraiser and secured an additional $1,000 for operating costs to fund Zip Cars to help UPS students get to TPS students. Skylar and her team formed two more partnerships, one with Big Brothers Big Sisters, recruiting 22 UPS student mentors. And unfortunately, just due to student schedules, that partnership has sunsetted. An additional partnership was formed with communities and schools to tutor students at Oakland High School. And in addition, they created a shared work-study position. Skylar organized a trip for the TPS students to participate in activities at the very popular UPS Slater House Museum of Natural History. And this is really cool. She led a book drive so students and mentors could read the same book over the summer and then talk about it in the fall. In 2016-17, Skylar and her team recruited 16 UPS tutors and decided to shift the support to students in experiential learning courses in transportation to and from their school-based volunteer sites. The first work-study student was placed with communities and schools at Mount Tacoma High School. In 2017-18, in the fall, they invited the UPS Access Program to facilitate a cultural competency training for the volunteers. They recruited 11 volunteer students and placed them with Peace Communities and Schools and Tacoma Community House Read to Me Program, as well as sports coaching program. They reconnected with the UPS Greek Life Chappers to recruit more tutors. They recruited 22 education students as tutors and mentors by supplementing transportation's costs. The second work, shared work student, was placed with communities and schools, splitting her time between the main office and Baker Middle School, as well as two hours a week on campus. So, tonight, we have Skylar Beal, the Assistant Director for Civic Engagement, and Mandy Chun, Volunteer Program Coordinator, and I'd like to invite them to the podium to accept this award.
Good evening, and thank you very much. That was a very glowing description of the work that we're attempting to do. And really, from my perspective, my role is to help Puget Sound students get more connected with Tacoma writ large and with our students in town specifically. And so, I really see the work of my office as trying to build those bridges and come alongside the great work that's already happening in our schools. So, this feels a little overwhelming, but we will continue the work. Some of our things are shifting as we're seeing needs shift and also as the institution is trying to shift more towards experiential learning so that our students are not only able to get into the schools to work with Tacoma kids, but also have some of that academic and educational support behind that, so it's not just a volunteer opportunity, but something where they're getting scaffolding from our education faculty as well, so that they are more effective with working in the schools. So, we'll see where that goes, but thank you very much, and I look forward to continuing to grow those partnerships and relationships.
Thank you.
No, okay. Thank you.
We just wanted to thank you again for all of your hard work and partnership with the district. There are two loggers up here, and so I think they've mentioned that to you, so they thank you for all of your work. And I was, in my former life, was the Access Programs Coordinator at UPS, and I saw firsthand that it was a struggle for students to get to campus for the Tuesday tutoring opportunity. And I wasn't old enough and thoughtful enough to figure out a way to get our students at UPS to go the other way, so I appreciate you all leaning in and being innovative and thinking about how to get UPS students to our campuses, our building, so thank you. Item 5.2, recognition of Adam Morrell, Stadium High School teacher, for being named the 2018 Outstanding Music Educator for the Commencement Bay Region.
Thank you, President Cobb, and members of the board. Stadium High School has a long tradition of excellence in the musical arts, and that tradition continued last week with the new honor. Each year, the Washington Music Educators Association presents its Outstanding Music Educator Award to teachers in each region. Honorers must earn the respect of their peers in the industry and their students, and demonstrate clear ability to bring music to life for their students. During its state conference in Yakima on February 16th, the Music Educators Association presented Stadium High School Band Director Adam Morrell with its 2018 Outstanding Music Educator Award for the Commencement Bay Region. As part of that honor, the Stadium High School Band performed at the conference. I recently had the opportunity to observe Adam working with his students in a rehearsal for that conference, and now, I really don't know much about music, but I can tell you the intensity of the practice and the voluminous notations the students were making on their sheet music was impressive. So, I'd like to introduce the Stadium Principal, Kevin Akata, who will present Adam to you. Kevin?
Thank you, President Cobb, members of the board, Superintendent Santorno, Deputy Superintendent Garcia, and student representatives, thank you for being here. I'd like to first introduce Assistant Principal Nancy Harris Clement, who's in charge of supervising our Performing Arts Program, so just to recognize her. Yeah. I'm proud to bring to you a program that has combined excellence and achievement. Over six years that Adam has been at Stadium, I feel he's developed a world-class program. Our bands have traveled to Europe, Canada, all over the nation. This last year, again, we were recognized as one of the top 16 bands in the nation by the Music For All National Organization. We were center stage at Butler University and performed. This last year, we traveled to numerous locations throughout and visited many colleges, and every single festival we attended, we left with superior ratings and number-one rankings in those areas. That's phenomenal. What, though, I'm so most proud of is that he develops kids. The kids that go through this program are great citizens, they are people that we're proud of, and they give back to the community. The band has done tons of community service in giving back to different areas and businesses, playing at different schools, so we're very proud of that. We are really proud of his last achievement, that he was recognized by the Washington Music Association as Band Director of the Year. So, I'm honored to present to you Mr. Adam Morrell.
Thank you very much for this honor of showcasing me tonight, but I would like to also thank everyone. I started my career here in Tacoma, starting at Stewart Middle School, and taught there for five years, and then moved to Stadium High School in 2012. And so, I'm just so blessed to be here in Tacoma and call Tacoma my home, and just so proud that we have such a wonderful tradition here, so thank you very much.
Congratulations, Adam.
Yep.
So, two of my grandsons were in his band and thoroughly enjoyed that and still love music to this day, classical music in particular, so I thank you for their time. And there have been so many professional musicians have come out of Stadium over the years who've gone on to make careers of music with this outstanding program.
Any other comments? Just congratulations again. Item 5.3, recognition of the American Heart Association for donating CPR kits and teacher training to provide CPR instruction to middle school students.
Thank you, President Cobb, and members of the board. Our community should by now know that safety is one of the strategic goal areas that you have set for our district, and safety comes in many forms. Tonight, we get the chance to celebrate a considerable donation that statistics say will end up saving lives. To provide you with more background on this recognition, it's my pleasure to introduce two key district administrators who you don't get to hear from very often, but do tremendous work on behalf of our students. Health Services Administrator Shalee Hobbs and Hannah Benrow, Director of Academic Alignment and Innovation.
Good evening, I'm Shalee Hobbs with Health Services. Each day, about 1,000 Americans or roughly 350,000 a year will suffer a sudden cardiac arrest. It can happen anytime, to anyone, and most won't see it coming. Unfortunately, nearly 90% of these people will die before reaching a hospital. However, bystander CPR can double or even triple sudden cardiac arrest survival rates. Most of these heart attacks happen at home, making it essential that families learn how to perform bystander CPR. Unfortunately, too few citizens know CPR, and therefore, the American Heart Association has made CPR education a priority. By training students, the American Heart Association hopes through their CPR in Schools Program to add thousands of rescuers to our communities each year, young adults who are prepared to act in an emergency. Immediate bystander CPR is the key to survival because it keeps blood flowing to the brain, buying time until paramedics arrive. The American Heart Association CPR in School Program seeks to empower students to save lives, creating the next generation of lifesavers.
Good evening, I'm Hannah Benrow, with the Curriculum and Instruction Department. CPR education is an important topic with our health education standards. While instruction on this topic has primarily been focused with high school students in Tacoma, this learning is crucial for our students, families, and our community. Our middle school students are very capable, and we look forward to learning with, or partnering with our educators around these life-saving efforts. On behalf of the Curriculum and Instruction Department, our teachers and our students, I appreciate this opportunity to express gratitude to the family that is donating these resources and to the American Heart Association for their partnership in making this learning a reality within our schools.
At this time, I would like to introduce Shayna Contreras from the American Heart Association to speak further about the CPR in Schools Program and the gift being given to Tacoma Public Schools.
We'll do the official handoff. Good evening, and thank you so much. I'm honored to be here today to speak with you on behalf of the American Heart Association. February is actually American Heart Month, so there couldn't possibly be a more fitting time to present this gift. The American Heart Association, through generous funding provided by the Murphy family, is excited to introduce a new hands-only CPR training program for Tacoma Public Schools' middle school students in an effort to increase awareness, education, and confidence in CPR training. In 2012, Jimmy Murphy, who was 23-years-old at the time, personally experienced sudden cardiac arrest while at a friend's house in Lakewood, Washington. In a heroic, life-saving effort, one of Jimmy's friends performed CPR for over 15 minutes before emergency response units arrived onsite. It was these 15 minutes of CPR that ultimately saved Jimmy's life and protected his vital organs from suffering any negative impact from the event. Jimmy was fortunate to survive, and he made a full recovery following a period of time at Tacoma General. This event inspired the Murphy family to better understand current regulations for CPR training in the Tacoma area. While CPR training for high school students has been mandated since 2013, we believe that by initiating this education at the middle school level, students will be better equipped with the confidence and competence to perform CPR should they ever be faced with a sudden arrest, sudden cardiac arrest-related situation. The hands-only CPR training program will be implemented through the gift of 30 CPR in Schools training kits, three kits to each middle school within the district. Each CPR in Schools training kit contains 10 inflatable mannequins, instructional DVDs, facilitator guides, and we hope that they empower students to learn the core skills of hands-only CPR, choking relief, and AED use. All of this can be done in less than one class period. These kits can also be used to extend life-saving training to school faculty, staff, parents, volunteers, and community members. One kit can train hundreds of individuals. I want to thank the board and everyone at Tacoma Public Schools who has so graciously agreed to join us in the fight to eliminate death from cardiovascular disease by providing this vital education at the middle school level and beyond. You are making a true difference in the lives of your students and in your greater community. Thank you.
I would. I want to thank the American Heart Association. This is a great donation to our middle schools. It now complements the AEDs that we have in all of our schools now, both high schools, middle schools, and elementary schools, and CPR is the first in action that gets taken and then the AED, so our kids are going to be well-trained on dealing with cardiac incidents, and thank you.
May I say an additional word? Does that sound alright?
Sure. I'm Karen with the American Heart Association, and I work with the youth market here in the Tacoma area specifically, and I really just wanted to say thank you to the community and the board. The partnership that we have really helps to drive heart health education, starting at a young age. I'm dressed like this today because I was on the floor with kids at Grant and Arlington and Whittier today, talking about heart health, and really, it begins because we have this support from the community at large, and the donations that come to us via some of our youth programs help us to implement, you know, some of these advocacy issues that are so important in the state and lead to long-term heart health here. We can't do it without the community, but we can't do it without the support of the board as well, and we just want to say thank you. We are grateful, and the partnership that we have with you obviously is extended to the Murphy family, who in turn, there's a nice circle that happens here, and the give-back is really something that we're grateful to be able to offer, but we do thank you for the long-term decades of support that we've had. We truly are grateful, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much for the continued support of the district and students. So, we'll move on to item six, members of the public wishing to address the board. School board members encourage public participation. Your input is appreciated. If you would like to address the school board, please follow these steps. First, complete a Citizens Request to Speak card, which is located at the back of the auditorium. Submit the card to the school board secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards submitted after the public comment period has ended will not be considered at this session. The superintendent will call your name when it's your turn to address the school board. Please speak into the microphone. You'll have up to three minutes to share your comments, and you'll get a warning when you have one minute left. First speaker is Shondis Lee Robinson.
I've got three already in Tacoma Public Schools, and I have two who have already graduated from Tacoma. I understand that our high schools have police officers. What about the younger kids who don't have anyone armed to protect them? This came about because of the Florida shooting recently. We have air marshals. What about starting school marshals? This could comprise of armed veterans and retired police officers, or since there is already a contract with the Tacoma Police Department, put officers in every school. Ideally, these people would be dressed in civilian clothes, they don't stand out. Along with this, what about teaching martial arts to students as a PE option? Kentwood High School in Kent, Washington, has been doing this since 1955. They've been teaching judo. There have been 18 school shootings so far this year, and 2018 just started. There have been 300 since 2013, about one a week. According to the National Association of School Resource Officers, there are about 17,000 resource officers in schools across the country. Isn't it time we do more to protect all of our kids, including the young ones? I brought this to the Elementary Booster Club. They liked the idea and told me I needed to come talk with you. So, what do you guys think, or is this something you need to think about?
And just to let you know, we take public comment, but the board doesn't dialogue, so we will appoint someone to follow back up with you.
Perfect. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Are there additional comments?
I'm sorry, that's the only speaker.
Okay, thank you. So, we'll move on to item seven, the superintendent's report.
So, I wanted just to talk a little bit about some of what we've been doing with school visits. We've approached it a little bit differently this year, so we've had some visits where the entire cabinet has gone into schools and just really, you know, gone in and gone through classrooms and taken a look at what's going on, and we always have an opportunity to sit with the principal, so the principal can tell us what their priorities are and what they're working on, and it's just been a really good way for our leadership team to really get into schools, number one. Number two, to really look at the ground level of what we're doing with our initiatives. I just wanted to make sure that people knew that it's an important part of our work to do that. In addition, Marie and Tony and I have gone into classrooms. We're really looking specifically at our literacy framework and our literacy initiative, and it has been so exciting to see the progress that teachers, you know, have made and the efforts that they are making to implement. You know, we have this firm benchmark goal of increasing the proficiency in our K3 and of course, you know, all the grade levels of increasing literacy, and so, part of that is really going in and talking with principals and seeing what kind of supports they're putting in in schools, so that's been real exciting. Right before I came, I went to Sherman, and they're having their first STEAM fair, and the school is just totally lit up with all the different projects and the excitement of the students and the parents, of course, incredible parent engagement, and I think all of our schools that have had this project-based learning have really experienced that way that the whole family gets involved and wants to be a part of it, so it's been real exciting. So, I just wanted to let people know that that part of our job, as far as getting into schools and seeing what's going on at the ground level, I know, you know, board members go and get involved in schools in different levels, really makes a difference. That's my report.
Any comments or questions? Thank you. Item number eight, the consent agenda. Oh, thank you. Is there a...
I move that we approve the consent agenda. Second motion.
Before we take a vote on this, I think Superintendent Santorno will comment.
Yeah, one of the things that, another part, important part of our job is getting the right personnel into the right school, so we spend a lot of time really doing succession planning and doing training for our principals and working at many different levels to make sure we have good matches with principals in schools. It's difficult when we have a principal that decides to retire or resign because we know that we have to go through the heavy lifting of getting somebody else in there that's going to make a difference. And we spend a lot of time, and we work as a team. It's a pleasure to work with Lisa from Human Resources and Tony from K-12 Support. In teaching and learning, we all have a little bit of a different feel of the elephant to decide what would be a good match. So, first, we consider opportunities from within. Sometimes, we decide, you know, that we do want to post, and we get a variety of people from inside and outside. In this case, we're going to talk about Jefferson and Meeker. The positions were both posted, and we had a number of successful external and internal applicants. They went through a very rigorous hiring process, and we had two individuals that really stood out, and I'm proud to say that they are both products of, currently in the Tacoma Public System. First one is James Ball, Jim. He will become the new principal at Jefferson Elementary School beginning July 1. He is currently serving as the Assistant Principal at McCarver Elementary, and before he served with Becky Owens at McCarver, he was two years the Assistant Principal at Sheridan Elementary. Before he came to Tacoma, he spent 10 years as an elementary school teacher in Puyallup, so thank you, Puyallup, for getting him ready for us. We appreciate that. And at both Sheridan and McCarver, Jim has served highly diverse communities and led the staff work at the Tacoma Whole Child Initiative. In my conversation with him, it was easy to tell that he was poised and ready to take this job and that he was excited about it. Jim, will you come up and say a couple of words?
Alright, hey, thank you. Good evening, President Cobb, members of the board. I'm honored and humbled that you have deemed me worthy of being the next principal at Jefferson Elementary. For me, this is a culmination of years of hard work and a determination to always do right by kids. I need to quickly thank my wife, who is with my son at piano practice right now, but she's just the best. I think anybody in here who's married may think their wife is the best. You're wrong, my wife is the best. And for my sons, Brian and Garrett, who... And for my sons, Brian and Garrett, who deserve a special thanks for sharing their dad with the students of Tacoma. I came here to Tacoma from Puyallup, one, because Lisa Nolan can sure sell something. That's right. She's great. But also, I wanted to be a part of something big, and this community has not disappointed. I promise to relentlessly serve the students, staff, and community of Jefferson Elementary, and thank you again for this honor.
Congratulations.
This is if you're approved. This, the second person who's being presented to the board tonight is Pat Kajak, who will become the new principal at Meeker Middle School after Tim Barant's retirement at the end of the school year, which is also effective July 1. This makes great sense, since he currently serves as the successful assistant principal at Meeker, and he knows the staff and the Meeker community. He has influenced the positive development of systems and promoted a positive school culture. He's ready to step up to his leadership role and build on the momentum that Tim has established. Pat, I didn't know Pat very well, but over the, I can't remember, must have been over winter break, he invited me over to Meeker, and we ended up having this long, two-hour conversation. He invited me to go over and look at the fields at Meeker. It was freezing cold. I'm like, no, I'm not going outside to look at the fields. I'll look at them from the window. But I totally was impressed with the energy and excitement that he has about Meeker. It is not easy for an assistant principal to come up and be a principal and to go through an interview, rigorous interview progress, process with your whole school, because they already know your, you know, your bruises, your work, your warts. And he was courageous, did an incredible job, and performed really well. If you're approved, Pat, it's going to be a pleasure to work with you at Meeker. Will you come up and say a few words?
Good evening, Cabinet. Yeah, I didn't prepare a huge speech tonight. It's just, it's been a total honor. I came from Wenatchee three years ago to Meeker Middle School, and the kids, the staff, the students, the families there, and I live in the community, I've just fell in love with them. They're just a great group of, of family, and they're committed to all the students every day. Just, I like Tacoma. And I'm just excited to take on this new, this new role as principal and just continue to lead them in a positive direction. The last three years, we've done some great things, and I'm just looking forward to continuing that. And I'd like the, just the support of my wife and my family and stuff, I'd just like to acknowledge them too. My wife is the best as well, Jimmy, so I'd like to make, make sure that I mention that as well. And I didn't plan on taking Carla outside in the snow. I wanted her just to go outside and see the, see the track from the window, so I wasn't going to take her out, the superintendent, out for the track. The rubber's not even on there yet either, so anyways. But thank you, and it's, it's been truly an honor to serve as vice principal, and I'm just excited to take this role as principal.
So, it's been moved and seconded that we adopt the consent agenda. All those in favor, or actually, I didn't ask for any additional questions about the motion or items on the consent agenda? Okay, all those in favor of adopting the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is approved. So moving on to item number nine, policy matters, and there are no policy matters tonight. Item 10, quarterly financial update. Presentations on the financial health of the district will be made during regular board meetings on a quarterly basis. Monthly financial statements can be found on the district website at tacomschools.org, and then to About, and then to Finance. Item 11, curriculum and instruction, and there are no curriculum and instruction matters tonight. Item 10, I mean, 10, item 12 is business matters. 12.1, approval of increase for paratransit services for alternative transportation, McKinney-Vento students.
The chief financial officer recommends that the board of directors approve the increase of $135,000 for paratransit services for the purposes of alternate student transportation for the 17-18 year.
Move approval.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments about this item? All those in favor of adopting the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion is approved. Item 12.2, approval of online student enrollment and choice transfer system, vendor selection.
The deputy superintendent recommends that the board of directors authorize the superintendent to award a three-year contract to Power School.
I move approval.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Just one question. Who is Power School?
Power School is a vendor that has, owns the software for an online enrollment services opportunity. And so, I want to thank Ms. Karen Hayes and Ms. Bree Copeland. They have prepared a pretty detailed analysis of the number of man-hours, a recognition of some of our challenges in the past, about, I had better customer service.
That's why I'm asking that, because we've been on this journey now, six years I've been on the board trying to find that right fit, so.
So they, through our RFP process, working with our powerful purchasing department, they did a competitive response. They had numerous companies, did analysis, and then found out that this was the best quality software that we could buy, as well as it was their ability to negotiate a multi-year contract, saved additional resources.
Is that software pretty comprehensive vis-a-vis coursework? I'm looking at, does it cover social studies, math, science, et cetera?
So this software would be, it's my understanding, and all, if the staff wants to correct me here, but just, this is about the enrollment of new students.
Okay.
Transferring students, and then withdrawal of students.
All right, so it's going to deal with, I apologize for not reading this beforehand. Usually I do. So what we're doing is cleaning up our enrollment online. Is that correct, bottom line?
Yes.
Is that pretty much what we're going to do?
Yes, that is what we're trying to do.
And enrollment and tracking and so on of our students.
Correct. So we're trying to streamline the process so that parents can enroll students online through any internet connection, any device with an internet connection, as well as help our choice transfer system be a little more transparent and have a little better process in line for that as well.
Great, thank you. Appreciate that.
Can you say a little bit more about what you found in terms of the analysis of how much time you think this will save?
Yes, so we spoke with several staff members in buildings, elementary, middle, and high school, as well as several vendors, and we found that there will be about a 75% reduction in our building staff's manual data entry around enrollment. So it will free up a lot of man-hours for opportunity costs for them to be doing other tasks.
So this means, for example, like families who are enrolling their students in the district for the first time, kindergartners, they don't have to come into each individual building anymore. They can go online and register their children that way.
Yes, they can do their attachments, proof of residency, all of that. They're even able to log in, have a sign-up, register multiple students, and it will help auto-fill, so they're not writing the students' names multiple times, addresses, things like that. So it'll really save our parents' time as well.
So it's going to be user-friendly?
Yes, that was a big criteria in our, when we were looking, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Director Hines?
Yeah, I appreciate, I think this is going to help to create a more efficient process. Can you speak to how the software enables families that are limited English proficiency to be able to get their kids registered?
So we are looking right now to add our top five languages for the enrollment, so that will be in there. And then to mitigate any other issues, we will be asking families to still maybe come into the buildings and get support if needed, if their language is not one of the five that is put up.
Thank you.
Similar to Director Hines's comment, at what stage in the enrollment process do families complete the home language survey? Is that in the enrollment process, and does that happen now electronically? Or is that something that happens separately after they do the online process?
So we are going to take, currently our general enrollment packet for the district has eleven forms, and it does include the home survey form. That is one that we will include in there.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? All those in favor of adopting the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Item 12.3, approval of interlocal agreement with ESD 112 Vancouver for recruiting consulting.
On behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services, the Deputy Superintendent recommends that the board of directors approve the interlocal agreement with ESD 112 for participating in the TREG program for a three-year period.
Move approval.
Second.
Is there any comments or questions? Can you explain a little bit about what this contract will provide?
And we have staff for further clarification as well, but the TREG program is Take Root Employment Cooperative. It's based out of Vancouver. They are, help with highly hard-to-fill positions in the special ed. And so they, their opportunity is, is they work with public schools to provide assistance to the member districts in recruitment and placement of qualified educational professionals to deliver the services to students within the member school districts. And so it's really about a recruitment effort and partnering, so they provide a broader net and help us assist to that in some of our hard-to-fill positions.
Thank you. All those in favor of adopting the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is approved. So going on to item 13, other business. 13.1, approval to contract with Turner Construction Company for the pre-construction GCCM services for Burmey Elementary School.
The chief operating officer recommends the board of directors authorize the superintendent or designate to negotiate and enter an agreement with Turner Construction Company for the replacement of Burmey Elementary School, and to authorize funding for pre-construction services not to exceed the amount of approximately $50,000.
I move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments from the board? All those in favor of adopting the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion is approved.
Madam President, I need to recuse myself on item 13.2 for the construction, for Gorsmo Construction on Grant Elementary. My relative who works for them will be the construction superintendent on that building, so I'm going to recuse myself.
Thank you. We'll pause for a moment while Director Viall steps out of the room. Item 13.2.
The chief operating officer recommends the board of directors authorize the superintendent or designate to negotiate and enter an agreement with Gorsmo Construction for the replacement of Grant Elementary School, and to authorize funding for pre-construction services not to exceed the amount of approximately $50,000.
I move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of adopting item 13.2 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion is approved. We'll pause while Director Viall joins us again.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to item 13.3, approval of school board candidate appointment to vacant position.
The general counsel recommends that the board of directors appoint a candidate to the vacant position number two school board seat lasting until the next regular school board election in November 2019. The board is operating under policy 1114, board member resignation and vacancy, which was triggered when former president Ushka tendered her resignation because of her election to the city council. An application to be considered for the vacant board seat was made public December 15, 2017. We extended the deadline for applications until January 16, 2018. We received 22 applications, and individuals submitted an application, a resume, a cover letter. In executive session on January 18, 2018, the board discussed what qualifications were most important to them, and also evaluated the qualifications of those 22 applicants. In an open meeting on February 8, 2018, the board selected six candidates for interview. Five candidates ultimately agreed to be interviewed in an open meeting on February 15 of 2018. In executive session on February 16, 2018, the board discussed the qualifications of the finalists and the qualifications identified during their interviews. Now, in open meeting, the board will appoint a new director.
Thank you. I just want to say again that we, I think I speak on behalf of the board, that we all just feel very fortunate that we had 22 members of the community who are interested in the role and willing to put their necks out there to submit an application to serve on the board. So we just want to thank all of those members of our community. And then we feel even more fortunate that we were able to identify five candidates, or six originally, but five candidates ultimately, who are all different and all had great assets to bring to this board, who are all obviously committed to the success of students across the district, who have legacies, decades of evidence of service to this community. So generally, we just are just thankful for your commitment to kids and to our community and your willingness to serve. So at this time, I'd like to ask, though, is there a motion to appoint a new director?
Yes, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion based upon the discussions that we had in executive session about the candidates whose qualifications best matched the needs of the district. I move that the board appoint Dr. Enrique Leon.
Any comments from members of the board?
May I make a comment?
Director Viall?
It's more a, just a thank you to our general counsel for her sage and wise advice in guiding us through this process to make sure that we followed the rules of the state and made sure that we gave everyone the opportunity for us to discuss and, and have this opportunity now to appoint, I think, an outstanding candidate, Dr. Leon. Thank you.
Any other comments? Director Winskill?
I'd just like to make the comment that I could have worked with any of these five that we interviewed. They were all really, brought a lot to the table. And there were also many others we did not interview who I know would have done a really good job and who have done many hours of service to our district. So it's really too bad we are only a body of five.
Do you have comments, Director Hines?
I would just echo that sentiment. It's, I thought, after listening to each of the five candidates last week, they were all uniquely qualified, which was a blessing and a curse, because it made it really difficult, because they all brought different experience and qualifications to the position, and I appreciate everyone's willingness to participate in the process.
Well, and I think I kind of expressed my sentiment. I just echo everything that you all said. It's just really fortunate that we have such great partners and everyone in this community. So thank you again. So with that, general counsel, will you please conduct a roll call vote?
Yes. President Cobb?
Aye.
Vice President Viall?
Aye.
Director Winskill?
Aye.
And Director Hines?
Aye.
Motion carries, four, zero.
Thank you. And congratulations to our new member, Dr. Enrique Leon. I don't think he's in the room, but, so Dr. Leon will be sworn in at a future board meeting, so we look forward to him joining us shortly. Again, thank you again to everyone in the community who was interested in serving and who showed up, and we ask that you please continue to find ways to partner with us to support the students in the district. Thank you again. Item 14, report to the board, benchmark monitoring report for early learning.
Well, good evening, President Cobb and members of the board. Tonight, Assistant Superintendent Marie Verhar and I will be presenting to you a monitoring report on the early learning goal, the priority benchmarks for early learning. As you recall, last September 14, we did an annual report on early learning and the priority As you recall, last September fourteenth, we did an annual report on early learning and the priority benchmarks. And tonight, we are doing an update. Just to refresh your memory on goal number three, just as we start this presentation, our strategic goal around early learning, that we will focus on early assessment and intervention at the pre-K through three grade levels to ensure early academic success. And specifically tonight, we are looking at the priority benchmark of the number of students being served in preschool annually. Wanted to just give you the ability to review the early learning mission statement that was actually developed after you wrote the district strategic plan around early, as your goal of early learning, one of your goals of early learning. The department decided to develop their own mission statement and came together to build an aligned vision based on the goals and benchmarks that were identified. And prior to the development of the strategic plan and this mission statement, the early learning program was functioning as a unique entity rather than part of a cohesive early learning system. So this mission statement provides direction and aligns the work with the department, within the department. We have six preschool programs in early learning. We have the E cap program, the E L L program, Title One, Head Start, Special Ed, and Montessori, which provides a total of seventy-eight classrooms in thirty-three school locations. And although each program is unique, each, there is the common aligned curriculum which is used in all the programs.
All right. So tonight, we're going to give you an update and you do receive these updates in your Friday report, but we also would like to make these public for you. So the enrollment in our preschool programs continues to slightly fluctuate from month to month. From September through January of this school year, our enrollment has grown from six, from one thousand six hundred and twenty, that was in the June two thousand sixteen report, to one thousand six hundred and sixty-five as of January two thousand eighteen. As programs continue to grow towards capacity, we've seen an increase of forty-five students. Primarily, the growth we have seen from September to January has been seen in our peer model and special education programs with an increase of two hundred and nineteen, excuse me, with the two hundred and nineteen in September to now two hundred and ninety-five in January with an increase of seventy-six students. We have opened two classrooms, one at Reed Elementary and one at Fern Hill Elementary this school year. We do not see large fluctuations in our E cap Title One or Head Start programs as we know that there's a maximum number of slots for these programs as they're grant-funded. The data, as I mentioned, is also provided. We'd like to, we like to keep you up to date in your Friday report so you can track that enrollment. For your reference, the first three slides in your appendix is from the presentation that Tony, Assistant Superintendent Pace, mentioned from our September fourteenth presentation. We've put those in the appendix just for your reference. This slide captures the key findings that I've pretty much covered in the last slide. And at this time, we do not have plans to increase slots in our grant-funded programs. So those will remain static at this time. So in terms of our next steps, to provide our families with a smoother and more efficient enrollment process, we are centralizing our preschool enrollment process as we've created an online enrollment process that includes electronic applications complete with F A Qs. We will also have hard copies of this enrollment, these enrollment forms, in all of our elementary school offices for families to access if they prefer that method. We continue to seek creative learning spaces to attract families and community partners. At Willard, in the basement of Willard, we've created a STEAM center for classes in the district and community partners to visit. The STEAM center is complete with art centers, Lego activities, et cetera. We hold family and community meetings there and so families and their children can come in and enjoy that during our meetings. At the Point Defined Zoo, you've all heard about our preschool program with the Sammy Partnership, where each preschool in our district will have the opportunity to spend four consecutive days along, learning alongside high school students in the environment of the zoo and aquarium. The early learning team is working closely with the DART team, the District Assessment Research Team, under the direction of Mr. Zeke Edmund, to expand our capabilities to be able to efficiently capture data of students who've attended our T P S preschools to analyze their performance compared to students who did not attend. And we're getting closer to completing that goal. Just wanted you to know, we have not forgotten and we are working on it. With Power BI, we feel we're closer and closer to getting there. In fact, Mr. Edmund and I just met a couple of days ago with Director Ferguson and we feel like we've got a plan in place to be able to do that. The state has changed the way they're reporting our WA Kids data. So we are currently also in the process of revising our benchmark site to match the state's reporting site so the two sites will better align. We've also included in this monitoring report in the appendix for your review, two of the early learning benchmarks, WA Kids two thousand seventeen fall data and the report card competencies for grade three and five for E L A and math, which are not priority benchmarks, and that's the reason we're not presenting on those tonight. But we wanted to make sure you had that data in your appendix for your review. That concludes our presentation tonight. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those for you.
Any questions? Director Winskill?
My grandson was in the, one of the peer classes last year and he turned five in the summer and his mother didn't want to send him to kindergarten this year. She's waiting. She didn't think he was, she thought another year would be good. So he cannot go to preschool this year because he was five in the summer. So, but I have heard from some people whose children are special ed who would have liked to hold their children back for a year because of the maturity. So how do we treat special ed students in that, when the parents may want to wait a little while to send them? And be able to send them to preschool for another year?
I'm seeing Dr. Garcia moving towards the mic.
I'll defer.
Go ahead.
The I E P team would make that decision. And so the preschool I E P team, and so parents would want to work with their team to determine if that was the appropriate placement. But the I E P, the Individual Education Plan for a special education student would drive their placement to the next grade level.
Okay, so there is hope that they can, you can listen to them. And then the other thing is, we have students who go to private preschools. Are we, do we take into consideration those students or would Zeke Edmund do that? Is there anything in the data system to look at how they're doing?
Right. Believe that that information is harder for us to track if we would have to do some sort of surveying with families. Currently, right now, for this first iteration or version one point oh, we're working at looking at the students who've attended Tacoma Public Schools preschools. But I'm certain in the future, we could look at how we might be able to capture that information and be able to look at that as well. Part of our goal is to determine the effectiveness of our preschool programs on the success of students in their kindergarten programs.
So in the enrollment forms, do we put down a little box to check, did you go to preschool? I mean, do we have that on the enrollment forms for preschool or for kindergarten?
I'm not sure.
You know, that might be good. Do you go to a district program or did you go to a private program? You know, at least we'd have some numbers.
Why don't we look into the capabilities of that, Director Winskill?
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, that would be really easy just to know. Numbers, because I know when you look at what, one thousand six hundred and some odd students in this class, some of those are four-year-olds. So we, and three-year-olds even. So we, I don't know, it'd be interesting to know the numbers of students who are going to go to kindergarten the next year.
Thank you.
Director Vial?
I'm really pleased to see these numbers because I think all of you know this is something that I really wanted when I came on the Board, given my experience on the east side of Tacoma when forty percent of the kids were at age three or lower when they came to school in their maturity. And some of those kids now I see graduating. So I know that we really work on that bottom end and just to look at this is phenomenal for us as a, as a public school district. When I say we have universal free preschool, people look at me like we're nuts. You know, when we go to a national conference and the same thing. But to, just to see the growth and, you know, as I said, my grandson will be the, he'll be three and a half when he goes to Whittier in the fall and he'll be in peer model. And I think what a great opportunity for kids to go at three and a half. And I know in the three, three-year-old, they work more on the social emotional and then do more of the academic stuff in the, as they go into four. So I, I'll be interested to see, once we get the indicator as to, does that really make a difference? Particularly like as we look at the third grade reading scores, as we look at further down whether or not. And look at the whole child, how many of our kindergartners are ready for school socially and emotionally? And it was kind of funny, the other, just a little, you know, aside on kids, yesterday he was over and he wasn't being particularly well behaved. And I said, you know, if you do that when you go to school, you're going to have to go home. He got tears in his eyes and he said, that would be really sad. I said, okay, then don't do that. But, but seriously, this is just amazing. Every time I see these numbers increase, I really, I know that Geiger was able last year go to add a Head Start program there, which has helped level out their, get their demographics back that are more reflective of that neighborhood. Because I'd like to, for us to figure out, and I know you're working on this, a way that all of our kids can attend Montessori preschool that want to go to Geiger or to Bryant, but right now, we're charging about six hundred and fifty dollars a month, I think, somewhere in that range so that we can. And that was really affecting a number of the kids that live in the Geiger Ketchment area to be able to want to go to the Montessori. They like you to go to the, to the preschool. And now I understand those preschools are full. The Head Start, and that Head Start allows us to align, as they do at Bryant, to the curriculum for Montessori just as the peer does at Whittier for the I B program. And I think that that also is great for those kids who want to homeschool. I really would like to see us work on figuring out how to level that playing field out on those Montessori kindergartens. I know we don't have money floating around or Montessori preschool and kindergarten. So if we can get some kind of, perhaps look at a sliding scale to start with or I'll defer to, you know, the staff to, and I know we've been working on that, maybe the foundation, maybe there's a way to do that. But this is awesome. Keep up the good work. And I'll be really interested, as I always am, in measurement, what that, what that track looks like for whether or not preschool really does make that big a difference. I have a feeling it's going to show that it does. So thank you, hard work done, and Tracy too.
Director Hines?
I had a question. On slide thirteen in the appendix, is it the state that does the year-over-year comparison? Or is that something, is that a way that we conduct analysis of?
Are you speaking for WA Kids data?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, it's the state.
The state does do an analysis. We do our own analysis as well, but the state does take our data and you'll see it in the report card site on the O S P I site as well.
To me, that year-over-year is the same flawed apples to oranges as opposed to a growth model where we begin to track the same kids. So are we working on, here's the baseline for where they were as kindergartners and then how they progress as first graders, second graders, third graders? Because to me, that's more relevant data year-over-year. There may be an anomaly. There may be just this brilliant group of kids that come through. There's all sorts of variables.
Right.
But that to me then gives us some sort of evidence.
Right.
Well, isn't that the purpose of the indicator that we're working on is to be able to show that? I think, from what I read.
In part that, but also in part to the robust enhanced data
Yes.
system that we're currently building through Power BI. That will be accessible to our teachers, will be accessible to our principals to be able to go in and see how students are progressing through as long as they stay in Tacoma Public Schools.
Yeah, I think this information for the public, it's not contextualized, so it could look really good or really bad, but it's different kids.
It's not cohort data, correct?
Right, thank you.
My question is about, in appendix slide two, I'm looking over the course of slides thirteen through sixteen. And then the line item that I'm cluing in on is the not assessed figure. So I'm wondering about that not assessed number and for what reasons would students not be assessed? Another variety of issues, maybe student came after October or whatever. So, but within that not assessed bucket, I just wonder also how teachers are using WA Kids data? Does this serve as like that universal screener? And if it is, then what's the benchmark, first benchmark assessment for students who are not assessed?
If I may, we have Assistant Director Michelle Raw Lewis in the audience who does work very specifically with WA Kids data. And if she could come up to the podium, I think she might be able to help us a little better and more thoroughly than I could. They came for a reason, so.
They just didn't want to spend their evening with us.
Right. Though they did, they did want to spend their evening. Glad I asked the question then.
Good, sorry, good evening. So the not assessed has a multiple of layers how the state determines that. Some of the layers are if the students were, came in too late in the school year because they are automatically uploaded through our Cedar system. The second layer would be if they did not have enough data in one data point to complete it, then it goes into the not assessed pile.
So if the student wasn't assessed, what is the, what do we use as the first benchmark assessment for, to know how that entering, how that kindergarten student is doing? Or where do you, what's that data that informs that?
So in addition to WA Kids, WA Kids is only given in the fall for our kindergarten students. We also give students the developmental reading assessment, which is a one-on-one assessment called a running record, where the teacher actually sits with the student and they do some reading together. And that's done twice a year, winter and spring. And then in addition to that, for mathematics, when we brought in I Ready, our kindergarten students do take the I Ready mathematics portion only in winter and spring. So they have all of that data. And to be honest with you, some of our teachers so appreciate the data from WA Kids. They appreciate the format and how they receive this extensive information. Many of our teachers, well, I shouldn't say many, some of our teachers choose to give it in the spring as well so that they have comparative data from fall to spring. It's not required, but some see the benefit of seeing that growth comparing apples to apples. But there are other measurement tools as well as, as well as classroom formative-based assessments. I was just in a kindergarten classroom not too long ago, had a, saw a teacher at the back table with a student and they were doing some counting exercises and things of that sort where she was doing some one-on-one assessment there.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thanks for your report.
One thing I just might add is if you ever get a chance to visit one of our all-day Head Start programs, it's quite a treat. Especially if you go at nap time, you have to be really quiet. Be really quiet, but it is the most precious thing to walk in this room and see these adorable little cots all over the floor. And the children have their little family picture kind of attached to the cot, so when they fall asleep, they're looking at mom and dad. And it's, it's like the most heartwarming thing you've ever seen. And these little babies are sound asleep, like snoring. Then they wake up and they have snack and boy, they're raring to go for the rest of the day. So it's pretty impressive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do they have adult-sized cots? Because that sounds pretty good.
Perhaps. And then I also wanted to let you know that I just had this brought up to me and they're already going to work, Director Winskill, on adding the preschool box to the enrollment form.
Yeah, just be great information they have. Thank you.
So we'll move on to the budget update.
Well, good evening. How are you? Thank you for having me tonight. My intent to provide you with a report is really to give you just a brief snapshot of where we are. I do want to inform the public of where we're at right now and then also to provide some context around what we're seeing on a legislative perspective. Just as a quick highlight, our budgeting cycle is a biennial budget cycle. We have a larger scale budgeting process that happens during the first year of the biennium and this is the second year of the biennium, so this is a review year for us. We have few modifications based on what we're seeing in legislature and then we move on from there. And so if we look at our regular budgeting process, the things that are in green are the things that are already accomplished for the eighteen, nineteen year. We're working to identify priorities and what our funding is going to be based on what the legislature does. And once that's complete, then we can worry about how we allocate those resources and what buying we can do before we communicate. We had an interesting year with our seventeen, eighteen year, and I know I'm taking you back just a little bit historically, but it sets the tone for what we're seeing. The legislature adopted very late a budget that we call House Bill twenty-two forty-two. And we got a few legislative surprises. We were very hopeful with the conversation around fully funding of education and the McCleary lawsuit. Uh, we expected that we would see some pretty significant increases in revenues, and we actually did see that in this bill. But we were very surprised to see some pretty significant increases in, in health costs, pension costs, salaries, and other components that put us in a position where it became very challenging for us to balance last year's budget, the current year's budget. Uh, those revenues, uh, were pretty much offset entirely by new expenditures or expenditures that we had planned as part of the budgeting process. Teacher salary negotiations were also outstanding. Uh, the teachers had a salary re-opener, and they asked us to come back to the table to talk about additional salary increases, and those negotiations are still ongoing. So that is a concern that we have, uh, as far as seventeen, eighteen goes. But the good news is our enrollment numbers came in pretty well on target. We were, I think we're up thirty kids right now, uh, as of today, excuse me, as of today. And then another good benefit for us for the seventeen, eighteen year is that the K-three compliance, uh, lid was lifted. And that meant that we got additional revenue to cover K-three compliance. Uh, we don't have to actually comply with a specific number this year, but we will next year, likely. Um, when preparing for the eighteen, nineteen budget, what we're finding as we sift through House Bill twenty-two forty-two, and we have a better understanding of what it says, is that we have a revenue shuffle. Uh, the state has provided us with additional revenues, and that was meant to provide us with full funding of prototypically funded salaries. So they've identified this is what's in the box, and this is all we're going to provide you funding for. Uh, previously, we had all of these salaries that they're currently going to be funding in eighteen, nineteen, over in our levy. And so we lost levy dollars, we gained revenue at the state level, but we also still have all the expenditures associated with the original levy dollars that we had. So we're not actually adding, uh, any staff members, or we're not hiring new people, but it puts us in a deficit situation. And the reason that it does that is because the levy dollars that we will be losing will be coming back to us in state funding with very specific strings tied to them. They will require us to put it into CTE programs, into LAP programs, into our highly capable program, and special education. And those are all amazing and great programs, but it doesn't change the fact that we had a lot of expenditures over here that we had complete control over identifying how we wanted to spend, and making sure that all of those things fit within the new boxes that we've been provided by the legislature, isn't really working out in our favor. Uh, I would think that I would add to that, that our levy loss was more significant than I think we recognized it would be. And we were prepared for levy loss, and we've been talking through what that might look like for a number of years. And, and we even agreed to it, once the legislature initially showed us their bill. But we realize now it's fifty-five percent of our levy dollars will be eliminated. And it's just a little bit too steep for us to be able to control all the expenditures that we currently have in the system and be able to fund things appropriately without making significant reductions. Uh, additionally, for eighteen, nineteen, we're seeing that the class size compliance returns. We currently need seventy-seven K-through-three teachers in order to meet the seventeen-to-one class size requirement that is in the eighteen, nineteen legislation. So there's a lot of issues that surround that we have to deal with, you know, are we going to be able to find teachers? Are we going to be able to find classrooms for teachers? Um, are we going to be able to come up with enough money to cover the cost of those new teachers? And then additionally, uh, there's a number of salary schedule impacts that I will get into on another slide. Um, what we're seeing from that then is about a twelve million dollar impact. This is representing legislative impacts and what we've been talking through up till now. Uh, once we've started getting into some of our more detailed enhancements within the district, uh, we have, uh, expenditures that'll come from the IDEA program. We'll have expenditures that may be associated with the Thrive program, things that we had committed to previously that we're not ready to back away from. Uh, salary expenditure issues, um, benefits that go along with those salaries. So our, our teachers have already bargained increases, most of our bargaining units have bargained increases. Additionally, the state will no longer fund step increases, so as you increment on the salary schedule, move up from year to year, the state doesn't fund those expenditures any longer, and so we have to pick those up internally. So all of those things together have put us at about a twelve million dollar deficit. And I would just add that, that is, uh, a, an initial number, that's a starting point, a baseline, and that we will see this number fluctuate depending on what legislation comes out, and what other, um, I'll show you some milestones of things that are going to be hitting us that we have to address in another slide. Uh, we're being proactive, we've been being proactive for the entire seventeen, eighteen year. We did some targeted hiring reviews, every position that is going to be hired in the district, or that comes open, comes through cabinet, and we discuss whether or not that position can be repurposed or eliminated, whether we need to just let it go through attrition, or whether we hold it and hire it at a later date if we become, uh, more solvent. Uh, we're, we're currently working to save about three percent, we're really only around four percent, uh, I'm sorry, we're really only around one percent right now of savings. So, uh, we're not quite meeting our target, and I think that we need to probably start looking at some, uh, additional things internally as we move forward. We're scrutinizing expenditures, we're eliminating, uh, limiting expenditures, and we're doing some careful monitoring of our financial indicators. We meet monthly with our finance team, and we're going over, um, eleven different financial indicators to make sure that we're not going off the rails, that we're not finding that we're, um, outside of our trending, so that we can make sure we're keeping track of where we're at. I have a feel-good level on our finances of high caution, so let's not go crazy, let's not do anything significant, let's wait and see. So some of the key issues that we're seeing at the legislative level, that we want to make sure that we address, and that came through House Bill twenty-two forty-two, specifically the levy, I talked a little bit about that, we're losing just too much levy. So the state has given us the opportunity to put out a levy for a dollar fifty. We're asking for the ability to go up to twenty-five hundred dollars. Our voters have approved our ability to go up to twenty-five hundred dollars. We've been very, uh, adamantly talking to our legislators on a very regular basis. Uh, if, I'm, I don't know, anyone who hasn't talked to the legislature about our issues at this point, but we have got to have an increased levy, or it will not solve our problems. So, uh, it's something that we're fighting very hard for, and I think that it's something that we will have to wait and see what happens at the legislative, uh, level. There is an inequity in the two-tiered system. Uh, it creates a number of winners and losers. There was an article that came out in the Seattle Times this week that talked through, uh, the fact that there are a number of school districts, uh, friends of ours, but at the same time, they don't have the same e, resource issues that we do, they don't have the same poverty levels that we do, yet they're benefiting rather significantly while we're struggling to make ends meet and considering making significant cuts to programs. Uh, and then local effort assistance, the way that the system is set up currently, we actually decline to a point where we end up not having any local effort assistance. And so, but the fact that we have a property poor district, we can't raise money like a Seattle school district can for the same level of taxes, means that we are at a detriment yet again. Uh, as far as salaries go, we're very wary of the potential expenditure risk associated with House Bill twenty-two. We have to rebargain the salary schedule likely, or, or redefine that salary schedule in some way, moving forward. I've, I'm hearing a lot of talk around what that might look like in the legislative cycle during the supplemental, um, budget that they're working on now. And so we don't really have a way to prepare for that, other than to say, uh, we know that there's a limit in eighteen, nineteen of three percent or so, uh, based on what possibly could be the Seattle CPI. And then, uh, you know, hopefully that cap stays in place so that we can find a way to normalize over the next several years. But we know that we have several years of potential issues around salaries that we will need to deal with. Uh, and then just some general funding issues, the fact that our levy resources, uh, aren't going to be able to cover the salary and program needs that we have, means that there will likely be some level of expenditure cuts unless the legislature acts in our pa, in our behalf. Uh, the fact that we're having to use very specific revenue purposes to cover expenditures that we have currently is problematic. Special education continues to be problematic in that we'll, uh, we currently pick up eleven million dollars with our levy dollars, and that won't go away. We will still have to continue funding levy, or special education out of our levy dollars. Uh, and then, as I said, the salaries. The other issues to consider, and this is where I get back to the twelve million dollar slide that I had, that doesn't incorporate any of these items here. So we've got minimum wage impacts this year, the I-fourteen thirty-three bill that provides for paid sick leave is something that we have to pick up as a burden on our own unless legislation gets passed changing that. Uh, Senate Bill fifty-nine seventy-five is the Paid Family Medical Leave Act, and that is a tax that we will have to pay off to the state beginning January of twenty-nineteen. And that's going to cost, uh, roughly half a million dollars just in eighteen, nineteen, just beginning in eighteen, nineteen, and seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars after that every year. Uh, we have potential bargaining enhancements with the teachers, a number of gr, growing program needs, curricular needs, and then our fund balance usage, we're no longer in a position where we can just use our fund balance to weather any storms. We need to now really focus on how we can sustain within our current budget, so that we can ensure that we have longstanding financial health. So all of that to say, we're working really hard with our legislature, and we're expressing these concerns to them on a regular basis, but timing is of the essence. The next two weeks will be a critical phase in working with our legislature, and we want you and the public to understand what this looks like from our perspective, and then also, you know, what we can do to advocate. Thank you. Sorry.
Yeah, all the celebration at the beginning of the meeting and then it goes.
I, I hate being the last one too, I mean, there's nothing like ending the night with me.
Budget, budget people always are like that.
Questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, I have some, too.
I'm gonna start around with Director Hines, I'll go opposite.
Well, first off, I'd like to know your continuum of financial feel-good level.
Well, it goes to like, woo, to, aw.
Are we like, on the?
Yeah, I think, I mean, like, if you look at the DEFCON scale. I think you got the DEFCON scale.
As far as you can get on one end of the continuum?
I think that, I hope that I don't go any further than that. I mean, crisis would be the next level. And crisis, I think, would happen with some level of, you know, we're seeing some of our school district friends in significant peril, where they're cutting fifty people, or they're losing millions of dollars, uh, if you know what I mean. That would be crisis level, but we're nowhere no, near that.
So you say that we've been in constant contact with the legislature, and what are they telling us? Because we sat with them before session.
There are pockets of support.
Do you, do you?
Pockets of support within the Pierce County delegation?
I think that the Pierce County delegation fully supports us, and that there are pockets of support within the entire legislative group.
I can answer some of that, if you want me to, on recent, what's going on.
And, and is the state Supreme Court aware of the inequities that the McCleary fix has created?
Yeah, um, you know, we responded to the state Supreme Court in an AMICA brief, and we weren't allowed to actually present that AMICA brief on what our impacts were. Um, and the Supreme Court subsequently said that pretty much the McCleary case is solved, although they've retained jurisdiction just to make sure that they implement within an appropriate timeline, which is still questionable. I don't see that McCleary is going to save us in anything. My personal opinion.
Why were we not allowed?
Uh, they considered us a party to the case, uh, even though we're not technically a party to the case, I think we could argue it either way. Uh, and so they disallowed us.
Seattle and other attempts to file AMICAs were also disallowed.
Director, Director Wenskill, did you have comment?
Uh, just a, a question about the K, uh, three enhancement, because I was going to ask you if that meant the seventeen students. So is anyone in the state able to comply with that? Because the, you know, uh, building, uh, classroom space seems to be an issue everywhere.
So the OSPI sent out a great analysis, and it's out on their website, and you can go through and click through all the different school districts to see, and I did, because I'm curious. Um, if I look at almost all of the large school districts, and I flipped through all of them, no one, except for Kent, and Kent has some pretty significant financial issues that they're dealing with, uh, no one except for Kent was able to meet the seventeen-to-one burden, uh, as, as a large school district. There are many smaller school districts that are there, uh, but I would say that if I looked across, and I didn't do a formal analysis, so you, please don't quote me on the number, but if I look across all the school districts in the state, I think they probably need four hundred teachers to hire across the state in order to meet the compliance burden. And I don't know where we're going to find four hundred K-three teachers in two months. So, that's, that's the risk I'm really talking through.
Is no one in the South Sound that I've talked to that has any, um, optimism at all that they could reach that, or, you know, that they can reach that?
It's good if we're all, nobody's reaching it.
It's, it's good except that, um, the legislature isn't interested in that necessarily, and they will just reduce our funding, uh, associated with the lack of compliance. So they're just going to take that money back and put it into the state coffers, right?
Yeah. But it's that, it's that space issue, you know, it's like, I don't see a lot of empty classrooms out there.
There's an opportunity where we can, um, double up on teachers or put floating teachers in buildings.
That's, I don't think that works, you know, I haven't noticed that ever working.
Director Yaw?
Um, there was a bill came out of the Senate this week, and it does have a, we do have some friends. Uh, Senator Roffa certainly knows what they did to us, and she's been working very hard along with, um, our, not only our, uh, our immediate delegation, but, uh, Senator, um, Ziger from Puyallup and so on. There is a called home, hold harmless provision in there for us and other districts, but it doesn't say how much they're going to do.
Yeah.
And, um, and that bill is now over in the House, and having conversations over the weekend with, with our governmental person, Charlie Brown, said, Charlie, the Senate is going to, the House wants to take a look at the salary mess. And I think that's the best word for it, in terms of adjustments, you know, there, I think somebody realized it's been there long enough that, holy cow, we made this mess in nineteen eighty-three, and we all had to come back and fix it. Now they're looking at that same, it's interesting, this whole mess is very reminiscent of nineteen eighty-three, when they messed up the levies and they messed up the whole salary. So it sounds like, um, and comment, your comment, Director Hines, we do have support well outside our delegation. Uh, Majority Leader Linton, um, Roffa's, uh, Pat Sullivan, uh, or the Majority Leader, Pat Sullivan, Assistant Majority Leader, other people who have said, you know, this, we need to fix this. Now the question is, are they going to fix it for a year, or two years, or, you know, kind of, this is an election year, and I, I think, my experience, the years that I've spent in Olympia, is that probably they will give us a one-year fix, and then get through the election, come back next year and try to fix this thing. Because the state Supreme Court is not so much interested in this issue. They were interested in the amount of money, not so much the distribution. They did not look at that. There are some people who feel, including myself, that we probably are looking, if there would be a lawsuit, the appropriate place for it would be, uh, to go to federal court under this, uh, Fourteenth Amendment of the Constitution, the equal protection of the law clause, in that, uh, this funding allocation rewards rich school districts and penalizes poor. A very similar to Brown versus the Board of Education, Topeka, Kansas, in nineteen fifty-four. Rather than playing around in the state Supreme Court that this is basically somewhat of a civil rights issue. And so that might be something that those school districts, like us and some others that were mentioned in the, um, Seattle Times article. I think, to put it in perspective, Lake Washington and Issaquah, which only have like eighteen percent, Issaquah has seven percent free lunch. They're getting thirty-three hundred dollars per student. We actually were rolled back and we're getting a thousand. And I think, to me, that's the most glaring, can, that to me is a, a major inequity involving penalizing districts that have poverty and high minority, minority students. So maybe that kind of puts things into perspective where they are in Olympia. I think, I think we'll find out where the House is. I have a feeling they're not going home at the end of the sixty days, that this is, I saw an article saying this morning, this is beginning to look like two thousand seventeen again, in terms of the education stuff. So all we can do is, um, hopefully that they will do that. Hold harmless for at least a year and come up with a solution so that we're not looking at some big cuts.
I, I would like to add just a statement around the hold harmless, because as I read the language of the bill, it, um, indicates that hold harmless is your basic education allocation in, plus your levy and your local effort assistance dollars to add it together. And so i- if that's the hold harmless, uh, threshold, we may not be below that threshold, or we may not be below that threshold by much, not by twelve million dollars. Because the issue for us then is, it's the way that, um, the way that the dollars are focused in specific pots that cause us the loss of revenue over here. Uh, we, we have to, we have to have enough money to cover the expenditures that we're losing out of that levy. So, um, if they, if they were to rearrange, rearrange that language, or expressly say that it's just the general apportionment and not these special apportionment pieces that are being incorporated into that hold harmless amount, then we might be, uh, faring better. But I, I don't want to hold my hat on the hold harmless and the hope that they fix things next year, because it just creates a mess for that too.
I don't, I'm, I'm just hoping it gives us an extra year to go through all that we need to.
I just have one comment on the seventeen-to-one. Initially, um, I thought that that requirement was added as the full funding for the full program of basic ed was phased in. Do you hear any talk that long-term, that that compliance requirement will go away? Do you hear any talk that long-term that that compliance requirement will go away? No?
No, and I mean, it's vacillating in all of the bills and all the conversations about whether it's going to be delayed or not. And, you know, but no, I don't hear, I don't hear it going away. I don't, I don't know.
Okay, cool. Any other comments? Thank you.
Thanks, Ross.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item fifteen, board comments or reports. Start with Director Viall. Any report?
Nope.
Director Wenskill?
No, not this time.
Director Heinz?
Well, I just, after the doom and gloom of the budget, would like to thank the Tacoma voters for. At least the Tacoma voters have our back overwhelmingly passing the two levies. So thanks to them for that, because it could be even worse, Rosalyn. You could be creating a whole new category on your scale. Yes, yeah, so appreciative of that. And then I see that she's left, but, you know, I, I think we certainly heard one person express the sentiment of a whole lot of people. After that just heinous event in Florida around school safety. And I think that there's ample opportunity for us as a district to work like we've done on all of these other issues with our community. To come up with a comprehensive approach. You know, as a public safety professional, I understand there is that desire to protect kids. But arming teachers and fortifying buildings doesn't necessarily create an environment conducive to learning. So I think there's an opportunity for us to reach out to our partners to come up with a strategy to protect kids. I don't think we want to start arming teachers. I don't see any logic in that. It seems like we're trying to create less guns in school, not more guns in school. So I just want the community here that it's an issue that the board takes seriously. And I do believe that there's opportunity for us to create a comprehensive solution moving forward.
We met with, we met with Chief Ramsdale yesterday and the deputy to, you know, again, just to reexamine what are viable options? What makes sense? One of the things that came up, Director Heinz had talked about a campaign of really teaching our populace, our students, our parents, everyone. That if you see something that looks odd, report it, you know, and talk about it. And they were very amenable to that. And they also talked about, you know, an opportunity to look at things we've looked at before and look at them with another lens. So, and then I think, you know, that we have to really educate our public about what we are doing. And let them know, you know, what our, our options are. And also to make sure that our public knows that, you know, we can't elucidate every single thing we're going to do. Because some of it needs to be private so that, you know, so that it can deter, you know, some, you know, some of those actions. But I thought the meeting yesterday went really, really well. And one of the things that Tacoma has that is in our best interest in, in preventing. And I thought Deputy Gustafson talked about. We don't know how many things we have prevented because of the good relationship we have with our schools and our police force already. Where we get on things and we're, you know, the police follows up. And they talked about how good the school district is about reporting and getting it to them. And they're at the person's house that morning, you know, following up. So, yeah, we all, there's, you know, there's so much we have to do. And it starts with a good relationship with, with our police and our community.
I just want to make one comment on that. This community came together big time in nineteen ninety to address the gangs. And we had the similar things in police departments. Safe Streets was, was founded. And within a year and a half, we'd made major progress in that whole attitude of, and it was very similar to what we're dealing with now. And, but that violence was in the streets, it was in school. Fortunately, we didn't have any, well, we had issues within the schools, but we were able to deal with that. But we did come together and we, as a community, we had the community partners, Safe Streets was formed. But we also had the community telling us what was going on. And trust that police, our police department built the trust that they have now during that period. Don Ramsdale was a sergeant up there. So I'm very confident, Director Heinz, having spent my life here and watched our community come together, that if we ask them, they will. And I think this is a time for us to, you know, to say, we are, we are Tacoma. We come together, we solve our issues and our problems, and we value working together. And we're not somebody else. And I think that's something that I personally have valued. I worked on, on gun control issues. Was asked by the Conference of Mears to work on the Brady Bill and had the privilege to work with Sarah Brady. It's a shame that that was allowed to expire. That did prevent the sale of assault weapons. It was allowed to expire. Mayor Rice at that time, myself, and Mayor Lynch from Wenatchee worked very hard to try to get an assault weapon ban bill through the legislature in nineteen ninety-three. So, you know, this isn't new, but what it is, it is old. And I, I personally think that, you know, we as a school district and some other school districts just need to come together again and say, look. There is no need for anybody in this country unless you are military to own an assault weapon, period. And if we can't limit the number of guns, the availability of guns, and particularly the assault weapons. Some, you know, as I said this morning, this is very personal for me also. Because a year ago, last September, two members of my family were shot and killed in the Cascade Mall mass shooting. And when you, you know, it's one thing to talk about, it's another thing to have your family affected by it. So I'm going to do, whether I'm up here as a board member, anything I can in Olympia to say that this is time. It is time. And our kids need to, I've been proud of them, the Soda Sammy and Idea kids who got out and said, no more, no more. This is two generations now that we've put up with this stuff, no more. Thank you.
Senior Representative O'Hara? Just one second. Our student board member's been trying to jump in.
Oh, yeah.
From a student's perspective, last Monday, we had an epidemiologist from the University of Washington come speak to our ASP class. And he presented like a really logical and well-reasoned presentation on gun violence. And I think it can be like pretty impactful for our community to like, I can't speak for him to like present throughout the community just to raise awareness. I think it can be pretty impactful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Director Wenskill?
So when I listened to that parent's comments, and she talked about martial arts and that Kent has done this for many years. And I started thinking about self-defense training, especially for women. So it would be interesting to hear from our students. Because I, I've always thought that people should have self-defense training. And what would you think of that being offered maybe in conjunction with PE and maybe even in middle school? And do you think that would be helpful? And would you like something like that?
Personally, when she said that, I was kind of surprised. Because when we do our lockdown drills, it's more like hiding. And I don't think trying to fight is an appropriate response.
Well, I wasn't thinking about necessarily the schools, but I was thinking of it, you know, out in the streets later, you know, self-defense. Because you hear that from some people that the training, they've had that training and it was very helpful. So I wasn't really thinking about it in terms of, of in the building, but more outside the building.
Yeah, I don't see how that could hurt.
Yeah, I agree. I don't necessarily think like, in that situation of the whole school shooting and stuff, you should go and out and defend yourself. But if it was like, I mean, extracurricular activity, they, students could do, then I don't see a problem with that.
Thank you. Any other comments? I was just kind of echo, I think it was something that Director Heinz said. But I, I don't remember whose words it were, but the thing that it made me think of was just being so encouraged by the resilience of the young people. Who've been impacted and encouraged by the fact that you all are, like, it just reminds me, we talk a lot about including student voice. But we need to keep leaning in to that because you all are amazing and you have lots of good input to offer. And you're a good source of solutions. So just thank you for being there. So we will move on to item sixteen, announcement of future board meetings. Saturday, February twenty-fourth, twenty eighteen, the board will meet for a retreat from nine to noon at the Tacoma Nature Center. On Thursday, March eighth, the board will meet at six PM for a regular business meeting. Thursday, March fifteenth, the board will meet at six PM for a study session. And Thursday, March twenty-second, the board will meet in a regular business meeting. Item seventeen, executive session. The board will meet in executive session with legal counsel for about fifteen minutes to discuss legal risks of current or proposed action. Per RCW forty-two thirty-one ten, section one I. So we'll break for executive session.
Should we actually be making motions to go into executive session? I know the city council does.
Yeah, thank you for that. I don't believe we need to make a motion, but we do not adjourn until we come back.
Would you check on that just? Thank you, and just find us kind of something in the back of my.
I did swim team this year and I thought it was really fun. We did good as a team. It was like, I think we got fifth at state and just one of the best years in school history.